Hi, how are you? First, thank you so much to answer my question last time to bring translation. And I need this message to everyone, families. And Osama Sablani said, why I speak last time in Arabic and they don't understand us? Ask, you get. You get what you ask. That is my message. First thing. ما هي الرسالة من وجود الكتب في المدارس? وهل سيتعلم الأبناء من هذا الكتب وما هو الهدف? ثانيا، إذا كنتم قادرين على شراء الكتب. ليس أنتم، ولكن اللي يشتروا الكتب. فلن تستطيعوا شراء عقول أبناءنا وأبناءنا ليسوا للبيع. الكتب لابد من إزالتها. The books have to be removed. هل تريد إبعاد الطلاب من التعليم الذي سيبني أمريكا ويؤمن مستقبل الأجيال? وهل كثرة الأموال لدى التعليم حتى تشتروا الكتب? مدارس بدون صيانة. هل يعلم أعضاء البرد أن في مدارس لا يوجد فيها مدرسين لللغة الإنجليزية ونحن في أمريكا? ما هو السبب? يتخرج الطلاب من One State ومن You've Been ومن غيرها بأمتياز حتى يذهبوا إلى الأخذة ليسا؟ يرسبون عدة مرات. هل هو لأجل المال يرسبو المدرسين المتخرجين بأمتياز? نتمنى أن تناقشوا هذا وقد تحدث مع الستاد عادل فيما سبق. ألا يعلم أعضاء البرد أن أبن المدرسين والمدرسات الذين يعلمون أبناءنا وبناتنا رواتبهم غليلة? لماذا لا تناقشوا رواتب المدرسين الذي لا تعد 50 ألف دولار؟ 50 ألف دولار نصفها تذهب إلى سداد الديون للمدرسين. والأخرى إيجارات وكذا. حسنوا من وضع المدرسين. أتمنى، أتمنى، أتمنى أن لا ينتهي هذا الاجتماع حتى ترفعوا رواتب المدرسين فهم مستقبل الأجيال. المدرسين مستقبل الأجيال. وأهم من كل شيء هم المدرسين. إذا كان المدرس سعيد سيوصل المعلومة للأبناء. يزاكم الله خير وأتمنى أن يوفقكم الله. السلام عليكم.
I'll try my best in the two minutes which are left. First of all, he thanks you for responding to his request to bring a translator or an interpreter. And he wants this message to reach to Osama Sablani. And he is sending a message to all the parents to ask for what they want because they will get what they want. Because the board here is to serve the parents and not to serve the parties. I'm trying to translate what he sent me. The books should be removed. What's the point of having these books? And what's the education and knowledge that the student will get from these books? Are we trying to keep the student away from learning? Is that the way to build a country with science and... Or is it that you have a lot of more money and you find there's no place to... So you're finding a place to spend the extra money? Also, don't the members of the board know that schools need maintenance? And that the students need scientific books and art books and not books like this? Why the schools are not maintained to help the students get better education? Also, do the board members know that some schools have deficiency in English teachers, language arts teacher? Some schools do not have English teachers, according to this anyways. Some of the students who graduate from here with high grades, when they go to get... When they go to get a license to get a job in teaching, they have to pay money and they failed so many times in the tests. Basically, he also added something which wasn't here is he wants the board to raise the salaries of the teachers because the teachers are important to the district and to the students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Hassan Ayun would like to come to speak to the board about...
Good afternoon. You guys know who I am. Anyways, I just wanted to tell you guys, what's the agenda of taking the books down? You want to bring a 1982 law? Is it acceptable for you or any of you guys for me to come and give those kids those literature? Or read those literature? I will volunteer to come to your school and read those books to your children. Would you accept it? Volunteer. I'll come and read books seven days a week for one hour to every class. What do you guys think about that? What is it gonna take for you guys to get these books out? And you say committee? Everybody on the committee, right? Who's the committee people? How do we know you guys got a committee? It's anonymous. How do we know? You guys are not doing it yourselves behind closed doors? Explain to me. Not one single one of you people want to sit there and take the books out? I went to Hamtramck. Hamtramck's taking the books out. Dearborn Heights is taking the books out. You guys got an agenda and I don't know what it is. Maybe you guys are Democrats. You guys with the LGBTQ. Is that what it is? Listen, I got gay friends. And if you got, you want proof, go to my Facebook, Has Cash. Okay? This is not about gay people. This is not about... It's about children. Something that you guys don't know about. So what is it for you guys are gonna take the books out? What are we gonna do? I'm gonna come every time. I'm not gonna stop coming until these books will be removed. I hope if you guys want books, I'll give you books for you guys to read them to your children. What is it for you guys gonna stop? What's it gonna take? You guys are looking at me like I'm a bad person. What is it? I'm not understanding you guys. What is it for you guys to take these books out? You guys gotta ask permission from Mayor Hamud? Who the guy that's gotta ask permission from? The Dolly Parton that was given $2.8 million? Who are you gonna ask permission from? Read it to your children, the books, to your grandchildren. And if it's okay, no problem. We don't want to opt out. We want the books off the shelf. Nice and simple. So are you guys gonna do it or not? And every time you guys want to call me first to get rid of me, you're not gonna get rid of me until the books are gone. Now, I think we all have an understanding, don't we? We're looking at each other right now and you guys think that I'm not, I'm gonna stop when elections done? Elections done. I'm not gonna stop. I'm a Republican and I'm gonna sit there and save the children. And yesterday, I drove three hours to protect the children, to go to a meeting. Every single one of you brave people don't want to sit here and...
Thank you for your comments. Thank you.
Next, Venus Jackson from Garden City would like to come to speak to the board about book banning.
Someone else has the floor now. We've heard your comments. Thank you for those.
I just wanted to say first off, thank you all for the, what was it? The emotional stuff for the kids and also for how many social workers you're putting in there. That's an amazing thing. I really like that and I think we should all be appreciative of children and also adolescents and, you know, any of the students being able to have someone to speak to because not everyone does. But I'm here to speak about the book banning and so here's what I wrote. Anytime you write a book where you write about your truth, there's going to be people that are going to want to silence that truth. Johnson, author of one of the books that wants to be banned, All Boys Are Not Blue. If I sit up here and say that everyone wants these books banned or homophobic, then I will achieve nothing. What I need answered by the school board is if queer relationships aren't allowed in books, then why our straight ones? There is a blatant difference between hard subjects and glorification. The school system is to prepare students for the working world. And guess what? The working world is harder subjects than two people kissing. I have never seen a call to ban Twilight, Fifty Shades of Grey, or Jamie McGuire's books. And all of these books glorify assault and abusive relationships, but they are cis, straight, gendered, white characters. As for the ban on books with the subjects of sexual assault such as Sapphire's Push, I have to say, who are we to take away that representation from victims? By banning these books, you're saying that with, saying that what these victims have gone through is to stay behind closed doors? That it's not something we are comfortable enough to talk about, to allow others to express and know about their experience? Parents, you have done an amazing job raising your kids and I'm sure of it. Just a blatant, I'm sure you all have children in the school district. But I think it's time to allow them to decide what they are going to read and what their opinions are on it. All of these, all of these books are in the high school. These kids are going to be adults in less than five years. They're going to be taxpayers. They have to understand that there are queer people and queer experiences if they want to have that emotional, you know, growth. I had a poem that I wrote for this. The oppressor doesn't care when you took their side because it wasn't about you. The oppressor didn't care when you turned to your coworker in against, for crimes against them because it wasn't about you. What it was about... And now there's no one to blame.
Thank you.
Next, Janine Zahy would like to come to speak to the board about inclusion.
Hi, Salaam everyone. My name is Janine. I am part of For the Banat or Men Ajal Banat. We are an organization grassroots voluntary made up of Arab and Muslim in Dearborn, Michigan, dedicated to dismantling the patriarchy and confronting gender-based violence in Dearborn, Michigan and beyond. For the Banat, accountability for Dearborn and Queer Crescent call on the Dearborn School Board to continue to make accessible books with LGBTQ+ content, including those currently in debate for banning. We believe in the importance of deliberate, courageous, and clear support of LGBTQI+ members of our Arab and Muslim communities. Transphobia, homophobia, and patriarchy appear within all communities. Arab and Muslim communities are not unique in that. We also must work to build greater support, care, and affirmation for Arab and Muslim community members who are gay, queer, transgender, or gender nonconforming. Much of this hatred is being fueled from outside Arab and Muslim communities. In August 2022, Moms for Liberty and other right and ultra-conservative white nationalist groups started using LGBTQI+ affirming books to stroke violent hatred in Dearborn, Michigan. We're seeing those same folks travel all the way to Hamtramck to stroke violent hatred there as well. This has resulted in several Board of Education meetings to discuss potential removal and banning of several books from the school's libraries. For years, immigrant parents have experienced Dearborn Public Schools as inaccessible. Exploiting the marginalization of Arabs and Muslims within the school systems, Moms for Liberty equated the presence of these books with the school district's failure to meet the needs of Arab and Muslim families. And in the process, concreted the community's existing sensitivities in homophobic, transphobic, and gendered violence. The same formula has been imported in communities across the countries with devastating consequences. You can go to bit.ly/lovefordearborn to see all the evidence that we have gathered. Access to information and education are critical to all members of Arab and Muslim communities. It is for this reason that Arab and Muslim community members have fought for years in Dearborn and across the U.S. to ensure access to education about Arab and Muslim histories, cultures, and traditions. This is a success we must build on by affirming all members of our community, not by restricting access to LGBTQI+. Access to identity-affirming histories and education is vital to marginalized students' survival and sense of belonging. Thank you guys so much for letting me speak today.
Thank you. Everyone that comes up here has the right to express their thoughts and their concerns and their opinions. We gave you, we gave you...
Next, Mr. Fuad Al Badani from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about the books.
Yes, hello. Good evening, everyone. This is like the fourth time that I come here. I don't know how many times, so, parents, everybody have come over here about the books and everybody talking about the books. And yet, I mean, we're still waiting for any kind of statements, resolutions from the board, from the people that are making the decisions about these books going into the libraries or these books going out of the libraries. From the way that I see, everybody is talking about these books and learning a little bit about the contents of the books and hearing about them, it seems like they are more than sexually explicit. And sexually explicit meaning that they should be banned. And it's not a question about reviewing those books and challenging those books. I mean, one parent can challenge the books and the books get taken off the shelf. We have a whole community coming out and challenging these books. So do we have a process for the whole community challenging certain books? What do we do with that? So do we go through a panel and see, take a look at these books that already have been classified as sexually explicit? So the law says take them out and we're still trying to do review on the books. I mean, you can just read two pages into the books and find out that this book is classified as such. So we need to hear from you guys. What, what you think? What's your, are your concerns the same thing as our concerns? I mean, you do, you guys do have kids and we have kids. I'm really concerned. I don't want those books to get any close to my kid or any kids in my neighborhood or my friends or relatives. So we're still waiting to hear from you guys. We want, we want a statement. We're not gonna come, keep on coming and sitting down and listening to all of your presentations and, and coming out and speaking and, and with no use. We're not having any resolution and any statements from you guys. Like Hassan said, you know, Hamtramck took the book, opened the book, find out it's sexually explicit, take it out. They took it out. It's simple. I don't know how complicated this situation is. We're not asking for 3,000, 300,000 books to be reviewed. We have certain books that people have come and said, those books are no good for our kids. So it takes 10 minutes, half an hour, maybe an hour or two hours to go through those books and find out they're, are they this criteria or not? Take them out or keep them. Thank you very much.
Next, Abdul Nasser Al Najr would like to come to speak to the board about the book issue. From Dearborn.
Assalamualaikum. Peace upon you all. First of all, it's very sad that we are trying to shift this discussion from the book issues, like are these books are good for the kids or not, to LGBTQ issue. This been the target for the last three meetings we have been here. And we would like you guys as a school board to step up and then say, let, say that this is not about, you know, LGBTQ issue. We cannot keep saying that and then every time we come here, the same thing, you know, same people comes here and they try to shift the, you know, the, you know, the discussion toward that side. So my point here today is that we are very disappointed of the resolution that just was mentioned at the beginning of this meetings about the review process because we are, we are blind about the process. I'm, as a parent, don't know what is this process? Who does the, you know, who is the reviewer for the books? You can't just come tell me here, oh, we did review the books and we, you know, we figured out two books are, will be banned and the rest will not, you know, the rest will not be banned. I'm, as a parent, hold the right to understand every single step that was taken to make this decision. I can't just come here and then listen to you just make those decisions. Mr. Hussein Barry said that we hold, that's a God-given rights. And we, we insist to keep these rights. It's no one, no one right to take these rights from us as a parents. So the question is that we need to understand very straightforward. Who does the review process? What is the criteria? This is a very important here. The criteria is, looks like it's not, it's, you know, it's not the right one because if you guys have a right, you know, a criteria for these books, the books will not be in the shelf. The second thing is, why, why this meeting is for me, this, you know, this meeting is very useless because we can't talk with you guys. We just come here, speak for three minutes and then sit, and then we come next meeting, we come sit with the same thing. So we're not getting anything out of this meeting. We are getting very frustrated. And let me tell you this. If you guys think this tactic would work with us, trust me, that's not gonna work. We're gonna be here every single meeting for the next 20 years if, you know, if that's needed. I'm not willing to allow these books to be reached to my kids and then we, and then we're not doing anything. So I would request you guys to have an open dialogue meetings. We can hear from you. We want to hear what you guys think about it, your conception about it. We can't just come here and then talk to you and then we just, you know, you guys are keep silent and then we come next meeting, you have your, and then we don't know anything about it. Please, you guys have to...
Next, Hillel Ottman would like to come to speak to the board about sexually explicit books.
This is already ready. Good evening. I just want to touch base on the process, honestly. The, we reviewed and we listened to the process, but we talked about it last time. This process is broken. Honest God, it's broken. It's been almost three months or five months since last time we, this issue came to you. And here we go. We hear the presentation, there is only certain books that are gonna be removed. The reason I'm saying it's, it's broken because it's subjective. It's based on emotions and feelings of the people who are reviewing these books. There is no solid process that will tell these reviewers, this book should not be here because of sexually explicit content. It doesn't make any sense. We pick and choose which books should be removed. If we have a solid process, objective process that dynamically can remove these books that are sexually explicit, we don't even have to have a reconsideration meeting or review. Because we have a solid process in place that will eliminate all these issues. Second thing, I would like to refer and hint to the point that trustee Hussein Barry mentioned. If you believe the law is against the board not to remove sexually explicit books due to lawsuits, I would love to learn how many lawsuits are there and how many judges actually ruled that sexually explicit books should stay in a school. I bet you, you will find none. Because it's simply against the law. These are sexually explicit content materials should not be exposed to these kids. Our neighbors, my friends mentioned, our neighbors, Dearborn Heights and Hamtramck, removed these sexually explicit books within days. Actually, Dearborn Heights within three hours. I know some of you actually expressed their opposition, total oppositions against these books. And you have the freedom of speech. I'm totally shocked why you, why you still silent and not saying that you stand against these books? Some of the elected officials in our city already said they are with these books and they support these books. So you have the right to say you are against these books and the Constitution will protect that right for you. Lastly, I honestly hate to see people labeled you as supporter or woke agenda activist because the resistance to remove these books from these schools, it just paints you as you are pushing the woke agenda into our city. And I hate to say it. A lot of efforts and a lot of people are trying to push that destructive ideology into our schools. And I don't want to see you, the people who are trying to do, enable, or enabling them to do so. Thank you.
Next, Jackson Wagner from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about last month's public comments and books.
So I spoke at the school board meeting a month ago. You know, as I said the words, I was born gay, a heckler shouted, you can choose to become gay if you want, but leave the kids out of it. Being gay is in many ways like being left-handed. Sexual orientation and handedness are both set in stone before birth. Less than a century ago, it was common practice for left-handed kids to be forced to write with their right hand. But nobody today says that handedness is a choice. Years ago, my Catholic faith was a core part of my identity. It meant so much to me. But it also told me that all sexual activity outside of heterosexual marriage was sin and that being gay was an intrinsic disorder that while not itself a sin because it's not a choice, predisposes one to sin. I did not receive sex education in Catholic schools. I had no preparation for dating, for setting boundaries, for noticing dangerous situations. I was 18 years old when I started at Michigan State University in 2011. I would have gone through a sexual assault and relationship violence program mandatory for all freshmen and transfer students. But because I had enough college credits from AP classes that I didn't count as a freshman, I slipped through the cracks. So did my perpetrator. When I met an openly gay student in the dorms at MSU, I found myself drawn to him. He pursued me as I was navigating the tension between the inflexible theology of my church and the part of who I am that I could not change. On September 21st, 2011, I was with him in his dorm room. That's where he sexually assaulted me. I did not know how to clearly set boundaries and he hadn't been taught that silence means no. I tried to shout at him to stop, but my body froze. I couldn't speak or move. That incident destroyed my faith. I followed all the rules of the catechism and yet I still got burned. I could not change who I am or how God made me, but I could survive by letting go of the church. The primary target of the book ban push these past few months, months is This Book is Gay by Juno Dawson. I read a 13-page PDF that has been circulating among opponents of the book and I can say that these snippets were all taken out of context. That book doesn't encourage anyone to do anything, but it does educate. If I had known the things it teaches back then, I could have protected myself. The same homophobia that kept me from reading books like that left me vulnerable instead. Leaving the kids out of it is a recipe for leaving more people like me vulnerable. A recipe for more assaults.
Next, Stephanie Butler would like to come to speak to the board about books found in Duval.
I changed my speech. This is no longer about Duval. But I'm gonna play you a clip from the executive director of CARE Michigan. We're gonna... Hold on. It's not my phone.
And say so. And have the public voice on how curricula is shaped and what books should be in the schools. Right? Why? Because we're talking about minors. We're talking about people who are not legally adults. Any books that are considered overtly offensive, have material that's considered lewd or lascivious, in pictures, as well as in words, should not be accessible to minors in... in pictures as well as in words, should not be accessible to minors in. There's a Michigan law that says it's a felony to disseminate sexually explicit matter to minors in pictures or verbally in words. It's literally a criminal statute to give something to a minor that talks about explicitly refers to sexual acts, be they heterosexual or homosexual.
So we can stop the discussion about what is and what isn't. I mean, this is the law. I don't care what ACLU says. I don't know if they've read these books. We know our rights as parents and we know that right now our rights are being infringed upon. So I'm going to read from, from this book. I didn't want to. I have not had to do that up to this point, but considering that someone said that this book should go back on the shelf, and by the way, I'll pay the library fine, I'm not returning this book. So you can reorder it, whatever you're going to do. Hey Elias, where'd you go? I'm in here with Mark and Bobby. Hey guys, what you doing? Taking care of business, have a seat. Huh? Why is it so dark in here? Can I come in now? No, you're too young. No, I'm not. Fine, but you'll have to prove it. I will. Uh-oh, I think I figured out what taking care of business means. We're each busting a load into this bottle. If you don't come, you have to drink it. Ha, ha, ha. Give me that, I'll show you. I learned about masturbation two years ago, kind of by accident. No one ever told me what it was. One day, when everyone was out of the house, I came across a videotape hidden behind the TV. My dad had hidden movies before with dirty scenes like Fatal Attraction. It was exciting to see boobs and butts, but this time it was different. I could see everything. People were.
Thank you. Next, Hussain Galan would like to come to speak to the board. I'm sorry. Hussain would like, excuse me. Hussain Galan did not want us to come to speak to the board. They said, I do not wish to speak to the board, but would like to make the following comment. What is the school board's final decision about the pornographic books? Why hasn't Dearborn removed the books like Dearborn Heights and Hamtramck? Next, Francazka Stevenson would like to come to speak to the board about protecting kids' rights to an education from Detroit.
Hi, thank you for letting me speak today. Uh, I would like to urge the school board to continue to make books with LGBTQI plus content accessible to our kids. Access to identity-affirming stories is vital to the survival of marginalized kids. Our research shows that LGBTQI plus youth are struggling with mental health decline, growing rates of suicide attempts, and even increased violence from peers and teachers. For their own survival, LGBTQI plus students need to see books that affirm their identity in school libraries. And even for kids who aren't marginalized, throughout their lives, they will meet people who are, uh, you know, their friends, family members, neighbors, coworkers. Uh, and it's important for kids to develop empathy for people who aren't like them and books are a great way to show them the world through another person's eyes. Uh, our kids have a right to equality education and banning books runs counter to that goal. Uh, thank you so much for your time and for the important work that you do. Uh, I'm going to yield the rest of my time.
Next, Najee Amud Hegi, I'm going to say incorrectly. I would like to come to speak to the board about parent involvement from Dearborn.
Salaam alaikum. Peace be upon you all. So, um, I graduated from college, uh, probably 25 years ago and my degree was engineering. So, uh, we studied thermodynamics, we studied calculus, we studied heat transfer, mass transfer. They were a bit complicated subjects, but I was able to wrap my head around all of these subjects. One thing that I cannot understand is why is it so difficult for you guys to remove these damn books? I honestly don't understand. Um, all of this talk about education and about affirming and all of that stuff, I mean, we heard one of the excerpts that Stephanie, uh, actually read and I think most people in here, my opinion, God knows best, I think most people here know instinctively in their heart that this type of material does not belong in school. So I don't understand why we're in the situation they were in, to be honest with you. And, um, the other thing that I want to touch upon, and I think somebody already mentioned it before, I really don't understand what exactly is the purpose of these three minutes because, um, back in September, when we had, when I went to my first, uh, Board of Education meeting, I sent an email to the board in the middle of September and I want to read you what I wrote in that email. I said, uh, thank you, Madam President, for your response. I know it's a lot of work to respond to emails, but I wanted to ask you a few questions. How can we interactively engage with the board if there is no back and forth at the public meetings? I suggest having town halls where citizens can ask questions and debate issues in a thoughtful and respectful way. Because the way, um, this is going, there's really, I honestly, I don't see any feedback and I really, uh, really highly recommend that we have maybe like a town hall where we have a couple of hours where we can, honestly, I swear, I, I'm trying to understand the rationale of the school board, to be honest with you, because in my mind, in my humble opinion, it's like an easy open and shut case. This type of stuff, it's not, you know, nothing related to homosexual, heterosexual, it's just not appropriate for minors and I really, it's nothing more complicated than that. Thank you guys very much.
Next, Steve Newery would like to come to speak to the board about ambulance cost from school to hospital from Dearborn.
Good evening. Um, earlier this year, my daughter had to, uh, take an ambulance ride from SO4 to Beaumont. We didn't call the ambulance, the school did and I applaud them, they did a very, they did a great job on it. I got the bill for the ambulance ride. If, if I'm supposed to cure the cost, I'll, I'll occur the cost, but now my question is, is if it's a school function or they're in school or somebody gets hurt playing a football game or, or basketball game and they're taken to the hospital in an ambulance, is it the parents' right to have to pay for that cost for the ambulance? That, that's all I'm asking. If it is, if it's my cost, I'll, I'll take care of it, it's no big deal. Um, it's just a question I'm, I'm just wanting to ask. Thank you.
Okay, if, I, I want to respond to that. Uh, Mr. Wall, who is our financial director, um, he asked to please reach out to him.
And your name is?
With that question.
Tom Wall.
Tom Wall, thank you very much.
So that's a specific question for a specific individual case. Thank you.
Next, Nabil Atholayeh would like to come to speak to the board. Uh, they didn't say about what from Dearborn.
Salaam alaikum. Good evening, everybody. I want to, I want to say thank you so much for your hard work and for the board, thanks for the first response when the, um, when we reached to you guys about the books and you first action, uh, call for investigation. Thank you so much. And also I want to say a million thanks to our teachers and special thanks to Ms. Hassan. She did amazing job. Thank you.
Next, Ann Clark would like to come to speak to the board about transparency from Dearborn.
I don't understand it. I'm a resident of Dearborn. I'm a Christian. These are Muslims, they're Christians, they're Methodist. I don't care what they are, religion. We're all here together as one community. This is about our children. This has nothing to do with LBG. This has to do with children, all children. I don't care if they're black, blue, polka dot or whatever. They're children. We have to protect our children. You're failing miserably on protecting our children. And we just have to fix this. And the fact that you sit on your platitudes and just no comment is not good enough. Your day of reckoning is coming. We as a community are going to do something about it because we have the power of the people. We outnumber you and we will do something. And what we're passing out now is an ebook at Duval. Now you can't get any more explicit than seeing a guy's penis. You can't get any more explicit as seeing a woman naked with boobs and a crotch. So what is, what is your definition of explicit? Do you have to actually see it in video? Well, now we got, you know, the ebooks are, are a danger too, not just books on the shelf. And you don't have a process. You come here every week that you have a meeting to say, oh, this is our process, but the process is words, they don't even have action steps, like we're going to do this. I'm willing to be on a committee to help and we'll have other parents because it should be a parent-driven committee, not paid staff. We pay you. We pay the teachers. And you're not listening to us. So in accordance to any corporation, we should fire your ass. But the fact is that we have a process we're going to have to do.
I cannot hear the speaker. Please, go ahead.
They're, they're fine. I have no problem with their.
But I can't hear what you have to say.
I, I, well, that's good. I'm glad. Thank you. Because half the time, we, we feel that you're not listening to us and we want you to listen. And if everybody else can get mad, well, I'm going to join the club too because I am mad that you're not listening. I don't have children in the school, but I'm in this neighborhood, I'm in this city and they are my children.
Next, Mike Hashem from Dearborn would like to come to speak to the board about admin.
It's a solution. Ms. Roxanne, Dearborn Public School of Education, you guys have been served with a notice of claim and intent to sue by attorney Darren Wesley. I'm sorry we had to go the strout, but the parents had no other choice but to retain legal expertise in this. And the problem is this board did not take any parent or person up here seriously. And as I said at the first, uh, board meeting that I went to, that we will take this to court. We will pursue legal action. The words that come out of my mouth is not a joke. But the problem is, when I say we're going to do something, we will do something. So I'm going to let the public know what's in the document that was just served to Ms. Roxanne McDonald, the board president of the Dearborn Public Schools. This is from attorney Darren Wesley. Dear Ms. McDonald, my firm has been retained to contact you on the behalf of many concerned parents within the Dearborn Public School District. As you are well aware, these parents have expressed to you great concern regarding books dissipating, describing pornography, pedophilia and/or sexually explicit content in your school library. They are also concerned over your sexual education policy enhanced by your own denial of their right as parents to be provided with the content taught on the subject and the denial of their right to opt out of your district's sexual education program in direct violation of the Michigan law. Despite the repeated, the repeated attempts and the best efforts of my clients to bring these grave concerns to your attention and have them taken seriously, they now have no choice but to pursue legal action. This shall serve as a formal notice of my client's intention to sue and vindication of their fundamental rights, including but not limited to freedom of religion, speech and association, procedural and substantive due process of the law, the direct custody, care and control of their minor children, participation in their children's education and their children's right to a public education and the children's right to be free from sexual harassment as protected by the United States, Michigan constitutions, federal and state law and other administrative provisions. Should you have any concerns regarding the matter, please do not hesitate to contact my office via the information in the letter above. And within the coming days, we will have a official press conference of the next steps to take action against the Dearborn Public School Board. Thank you.
Next, Jane Maza, DFT 681 president, would like to keep this, would like to come to speak to the board about positive events and DPS.
Good evening, school board trustees, Ms. Harris, President McDonald and Mr. Tom Wall. Uh, Jane Maza, president of DFT 681. First, I would like to congratulate, uh, board trustees D'Brasio and Berry, who well won election. Congratulations, gentlemen. I'd also like to thank the staff, students and parents for a successful first card marking. Dearborn Public School staff has again stepped up to make sure all students were supported. That included extra tutoring, coming into before school and after school to make sure all our students received the academic care that they needed to have a successful first card marking. Working our way back from the pandemic has been a challenge for all, but the students and staff have shown that focusing on the positive has been the best course of action. The media specialists also deserve a big thank you for all the hard work and time they have spent and will spend on the issue of appropriate reading materials for our students. I would also like to highlight a few positive events that have happened in our district lately. Tonight was the Empty Bowls Project at Park Place, which is put on in part by our art teachers to support, uh, local food banks. Also, all three high schools are involved in a battle against hunger, collecting again food items for local food banks. Lori held a Veterans Day memorial celebration and this is a time-honored event that Lori has taken place for, I don't know, at least over 50 years. So I congratulate the Lori staff on that. Also, Salina Elementary in Oakman have had reading events for both students and parents. Just this weekend, Lindberg Elementary had a craft fair that supported the school and the community and teachers helped to get that ready for them. Also, on a personal note, I wanted to, even though we're not supposed to say names, I'll say the Etzel Ford Boys Soccer Coach and the Fortson Boys Soccer Coach, varsity in both cases. I want to congratulate them for their win at districts. Uh, I work with both gentlemen and I know they're very hard workers as well as lots of time in the community. And again, I don't want to take anything else from the other coaches. I know this whole fall sports program coaches have worked very hard to make sure our students have had a wonderful time in the sport that they chose. So these are just a few of the positive events that the Dearborn Public Staff and students and parents are involved in. I'm hoping that as the school year progresses, we continue to highlight and celebrate our district's success. I have one final thank you to the community that voted to keep our public schools secure. Thank you.
Next, Samrau Lukman would like to come to speak to the board about a concern.
My name is Sam Lukman. Um, I first want to denounce, uh, any sort of homophobic rhetoric that has existed in the last few months because that is not representative of our community. I also want to say that people that do say those things forget our struggles as a colored people. I also want to support teachers and Red for Ed. It does not stand for the books issue. It stands for teachers who are doing God's work. However, I do wish to criticize the response of the board and the district that created an escalation and thrust Dearborn into the national spotlight, pitting one minority against another. And here we are today, continuing what is the third, what will be the fourth, fifth, sixth debacle down the road until you actually start listening instead of hearing. I've been told to come and voice my concerns with the process. So I'm telling you, your process is flawed and does not answer the concerns of these parents. You have parents saying that these, some of. You have parents saying that these, some of these books should not be placed onto the shelves to begin with. And yet your process only answers it after the fact. The census revealed that over 50% of the South End does not speak English as their primary language. They do not speak it and you're, you're asking them to read it and then object to these books. You're placing an undue burden on a community of immigrants, majority immigrants. So what's the solution? Currently, you have librarians picking and choosing at their own whim what is appropriate for their schools. And I don't blame them because you've left it up to them. Currently, I've asked friends from all sides of the spectrum, at what age are sexually explicit contents appropriate? I've had some say 13, some say 16, some say 18. So you've left each librarian or teacher to currently select their own age at which this appropriate, this content would be appropriate. Then what's the, that's their opinion. I mean, they decide for each school what should be in their school. And it's because you don't have any standardized method for them to go, go by. What you need is a rubric for all librarians across the district and all educators to be able to use, whether it's established by a committee or legal or whatever it is. You need to provide a solution. And I understand that this is a novel idea, but it was a novel idea when the MPAA was established and had to create a rating system for movies. But now it's a tried and true measurement of what we, the public, use to understand the content of movies. And much like the way you thrust us into the national spotlight, then you need to lead the nation in establishing a new process that will appease the entire community and allow us to reunite and heal. Enough isn't enough. Thank you.
Last blue card, I'm not quite sure if they wanted to speak or not. Yaya Elgami wanted to come to speak to the board.
I want to speak, just read what I say.
Okay, they wanted, please do your job the way that you promised us before you get to this position. Thank you. That's the end of blue cards.